Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Reinert.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Gamash.
Here.
Commissioner Jepson.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
President accounted for. Item four is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Commissioner Schulte.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Without any discussion, roll call vote.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item five, consider accepting the regular claims over $500 in purchase card claims paid for the period ending March 24th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
And that also passes unanimously. Item six, approval of minutes for March 28th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Jepson, second by Commissioner Meisner. Okay, got it. Any additions, subtractions, changes? Seeing none. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes. Under Chair's remarks today, we have one item, and that is to recognize our emergency telecommunications personnel as part of the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is this year is April 9th through the 15th. I'm going to ask Commissioner Brassad, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, to talk about the essential role these dedicated professionals perform in our county. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to start off with a bit of exciting news. Yesterday, as most of you know, we broke ground on the new combined emergency communications center and radio shop facility in Andover. Soon, our emergency telecommunications employees will be moving out of a cramped space in the basement of the county government center, which has run out of room for expansion, to a new state-of-the-art building that would allow for them to do their jobs better and with less stress. And in this position, everything we can do to help them, I believe we need to. Our emergency communications department is excited about this new opportunity, as am I, my fellow commissioners, and everyone who has been working on this project. It's certainly going to be a tremendous asset for public safety in Anoka County, for our telecommunicators, law enforcement, firefighters, and of course, our residents. Now, let me take a moment to thank our emergency telecommunicators for all they do for our community. This field of work is not for everyone. We know that. It can be high-stress, requires a fair amount of technical proficiency, and telecommunicators need to be tactful about how they collect information from callers in emergency situations. But there is certainly a segment of our population that is up for the challenge of working in emergency telecommunications. They perform an essential function in our society because they are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency situations. Our emergency telecommunicators are vital to the safety of both the public and our first responders, and they're excellent at quickly and accurately disseminating information that aids in the emergency response. I'd like to invite Val Sprinzenetic, who's the Director of our Emergency Communications Department, to join us and share a few thoughts with us about her area and the importance of National Public Telecommunicators Week. Welcome, Val.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, everybody. I have a few members of our staff here. A lot of them are downstairs taking calls. Some of them are home sleeping. So with me today, we have Assistant Director Carrie Morrissey, our Administrative Service Coordinator Kelly Rogers, we have Dispatch Supervisor Donnell Lawrence, and Jared Belter, and then one of our dispatchers, who is also a coach, and put together all the activities with her team for our fun week this week, Melanie Lloyd. So, thank you all. Between those of us that are here, we have about 150 years of service in 911, so.
So this week gives us an opportunity to thank the many people who make Anoka County Emergency Communications one of the best dispatch centers. It's fitting that the groundbreaking to our new emergency communications center and radio shop was yesterday to start the week of celebration. Our dispatchers answered approximately 400,000 calls last year, which is about 10,000 calls per dispatcher. However, it takes many pieces to get a caller the help they need. That's why during this week, we also celebrate our radio shop, as they are responsible for the 3,500 radios used in Anoka County, along with the hundreds of fire pagers and other technology. Like any good team, we have numerous people involved in many other facets of 911. Our Assistant Director, our dispatch supervisors, our CAD IT people, and an office manager. In my 32 years in the 911 field, technology has and continues to change rapidly. Previously, the job was answering a phone, which was a landline, and sending help to the address provided. Now, we get the majority of our calls from cell phones and often have to use other technology to help gather the accurate information, excuse me, the accurate location. In the past few years, Minnesota added the ability for callers to text to 911, and soon, we will be accepting videos and pictures from callers. Since we don't have the ability to turn off our phones and take everyone out to celebrate the great job they do each and every day, we plan fun activities for our staff throughout the week. Today is Team Sports Jersey Day. That's why I'm wearing this, so I apologize, but I want to be part of the team, so. This allows our dispatchers to wear attire to support their favorite team, whether it's their kid's team, a college team, or professional. Along with this, we provide a sports-themed lunch, consisting of hot dogs and chips. We also have Black and Gold Day, Slipper Day, and then my personal favorite is Disney Day. I want to thank all the commissioners, along with county administration, for their continued support of our department. Our future will be very exciting as we move out of the basement and into a new building with windows. I'd like to end with the motto of 911. Between the red, the thin red line, and the thin blue line lies the thinnest gold line. This gold line represents those that are rarely seen but mostly heard. The calm voice in the dark, dispatchers, the golden glue that holds it all together. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Val, and Commissioner Brassad, for talking about how important the emergency telecommunicators are for public safety in our county. Their jobs are certainly not easy, and we should all take time during this week to reflect upon the commitment and sacrifices of these men and women. They serve our citizens and public safety personnel 24 hours a day, which is unbelievable, and seven days a week, and we commend them for operating in that capacity. And as I mentioned yesterday, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work you folks do and the difficult situations you're in and have to process through on that. I want to thank you for your patience, too, on this project, because I know it was a discussion that took some time. Time to find funding, time to put it all together, world architects and others trying to come up with a plan that was going to work for everybody, and so that takes time, and so we appreciate your patience on that. But the one question I do have is, of those many calls that you get, how many are for pizza?
Fortunately, not too many.
Fortunately, not too many. Well, my hope is that there aren't very many of those, but the ones that are calling in are for important reasons, and you guys are there to help and to direct the sheriff and other police departments out to respond, and so we definitely appreciate all your hard work in this area, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I definitely don't mean to belabor the sincere thanks that we all have for you. Commissioner Brassad today talked about that this job isn't for everyone. I really can't imagine the medal that it takes. And then yesterday, I believe she shared a stat. I think the state average is 30 seconds to answer a 911 dispatch call, and you guys answer it in 10 seconds. So in terms of performance and your excellence, it's just incredible. Every time I hear a stat like that, it's always, of course, impressive to me, but honestly, I often think about the emotional strength that it takes for you guys to do every day consistently with compassion. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Now, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners to join me in support of Resolution 2023-37 proclaiming April 9th through the 15th National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Anoka County. Is there an offer? I'll offer that resolution. All those in favor signify by supporting this resolution, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, these items are not on the agenda, but I'd like to remind people about a couple of items of interest coming up. First, this Saturday is our much anticipated Senior Expo. This event takes place Saturday, April 15th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon at Lord of Life Church in Ramsey. There is a pancake breakfast, a senior-related information booth, and resources, entertainment, and more. There'll be commissioners there that you can meet as well, so we'll be, some of us will be manning the booth there, and we look forward to meeting as many seniors and families at this great event. Secondly, I'd like to remind everyone that April 17th through the 21st is Severe Weather Awareness Week in Minnesota. It's a week to refresh and educate everyone about the seasonal threats from severe weather and how to avoid them. It's also a great time to make and practice emergency plans wherever you are. So on Thursday, April 20th, there will be two statewide tornado drills with outdoor sirens sounding. The first drill will be at 1:45 p.m., and this is intended for businesses and institutions, and the evening drill is at 6:45 for families. So please use these opportunities to stop and make a plan of what to do in the event of an actual tornado. You can also go on our website at anokacounty.mn.gov for a link to more information from the Minnesota Department of Safety. So with those comments, we will move on to committee reports, and we will start off with the Transportation Committee and Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our Transportation Committee met back on March 29th, and we have quite a few action items. The first is that the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing Anoka County to enter into a detour agreement with MINDOT. There's payment provided with this as well. What this specifically is for the 2024 Highway 65 Payment Preservation Project, and we've got Joe here to tell us a little bit about this detour agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Joel McPherson. I am the Chief Officer for the Transportation Division and County Engineer. So I think the Commissioner did a nice job of explaining the project. This detour agreement is in relation to a pavement preservation project that MINDOT has planned for next year. The approximate termini of this project, it spans all the way from 81st Avenue in Spring Lake Park, all the way up to approximately 237th Avenue by our northern border. So it's a pretty substantial project. They're coming in, as many of you are probably well aware, if you've driven that corridor recently, the pavement is in need of repair. There's a lot of potholes. The surface is in pretty tough shape. And then additionally with that, there's going to be some access modifications that are included in this project, as well as some culvert and bridge replacements that take place. So this detour agreement is more related to some of those culvert replacements they have to do. They actually need to close down the northbound and southbound lanes on various weekends to get the work done. So these will be short-term closures that utilize our county roads, but with that, as MINDOT typically does on their projects, when they detour traffic onto a local roadway, they do pay for the loss of life on that. So that's what this agreement entails. We're excited to see this project. I know our vehicles are excited to see this project, so looking forward to seeing it done.
Okay, is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Commissioner Jepson. Okay. Sometimes I hear the voice over here, and I'm like, I think I, okay. My apologies. Okay, so there's an offer of the resolution. Any discussion on this one? Yes, Commissioner Mash.
I want to just thank Joe and his team for helping work on this with MINDOT, and thanks to MINDOT for getting the work done, and thank them for doing it on a weekend. We don't want to have it be done during the rush hour, so they understand, and I know some of us have received emails about getting the potholes fixed, and here we are right on top of that. It takes a little time. For those of us who've lived in Minnesota all their lives, you'd understand that this happens every year, but this year was a severely bad winter for the ice and the freezing and the snow and the water and everything, and the amount of salt we had to put on the road. So potholes happen, but glad MINDOT's on top of it, and they're going to do it on a weekend, so. Thanks.
Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So all of these projects cost a lot of money. These roads need to be repaired for the limited amount that this road is going to hopefully remain as it is, but as you know, there's a lot of work being done in order to raise the funds to redo Highway 65. Part of this section of redoing it, or repaving, is going to be part of the primary section that we're raising those dollars for. Any of the work that's being done in this project, will that be damaged or destroyed, or the work that is being done in this project will be for not, if and when those projects get done in the near future with the funds being raised now?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. So essentially, the portion that you're specifically talking about is the project we're working on on Highway 65 to improve that section between, on the north end, it's 117th Avenue, Cloud Drive, all the way down to 99th Avenue. So that is included in this project as part of the maintenance project. What will happen is, we've spoke with MINDOT a couple of times now, that if we're fortunate enough that we secure all the funding necessary to move forward with that project, they would taper back some of the improvements on that section of 65. There's likely still going to be some work that needs to take place on the pavement surface itself, but some of the ADA improvements, so that's the Americans with Disability Act improvements at the ped ramps and at the intersections, like 109th, 105th, 99th, some of those will be taken out of the project, and that money will be saved and then reallocated towards the bigger project. So some of it'll still have to be done, but a majority of it, some of those more expensive features that are more permanent, would likely be taken out, and then that money would be reallocated to the bigger 65 project.
Perfect. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson, aye. Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item two.
The committee recommends approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the City of Anoka for a project of construction of grade-separated interchanges and associated rail crossings at Ramsey Boulevard and Sunfish Boulevard on Highway 10, along with Frontage Road, Backage Road, and other associated corridor improvements. The next four items, this and the next three, are very, very similar, Joe.
Yeah.
Do you just want to maybe tell us what's special with this one?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So this one here, it's just actually off the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. So the City of Anoka won't have any financial obligations with this project. As we're all well aware, they're working on the Anoka Solution project right now, but when we start the Ramsey Gateway project, we will be connecting into where they leave off, which is right next to the Anoka Hennepin Technical College there. And so on the south side of the roadway, there is a couple properties there that do need access. And so since we're converting that highway to a freeway, we can't leave a direct access point onto Highway 10. So there's about, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, about a 400 to 500-foot segment of roadway that needs to be constructed in the City of Anoka, just off the end of a stub street coming out of Ramsey. So it's just off the right-hand corner of the screen here, down by Lano Equipment, and so since we're in their kitchen there, we need to have this joint powers agreement that spells out the long-term maintenance agreements with the city. They will ultimately be responsible for any of the long-term maintenance things, so that'd be crack ceiling, replacing the pavement surface. There will be, there's a park located there, and there'll be a parking lot constructed with this improvement. They'll also be responsible for those improvements as well.
Any further questions on this one? I'll move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye. And that motion passes unanimously. Item three.
Okay, very similar, but this is with the City of Ramsey for the same projects. Joe, anything you want to point out on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So this one here is a little bit more detailed. A majority of this project is located within the City of Ramsey, so naturally, there are some cost participation responsibilities that are included in this joint powers agreement. Early on in the project, I want to compliment the city on being a strong partner and advocate for the project, so they have committed $4 million to deliver this project. So that is included in the joint powers agreement, along with who's responsible for the new frontage roads that'll be completed, and the intersection improvements, the trails, the sidewalks, all of that stuff is incorporated into this agreement. So that's the nature of this one.
Okay, I will move this. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item four.
The committee recommends approval to enter into a construction agreement with BNSF Railway for the Ramsey Boulevard, construction of grade-separated interchange and associated rail crossings.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So you guys have seen a number of these agreements pass before your eyes here over the course of the last couple of years. We've actually formed a pretty positive working relationship with BNSF over this time period, and so again, they are stepping up to help participate with the cost to deliver this Ramsey Gateway project. So this item and the next one are both related to the same project, but because it's at two separate locations, we have two separate distinct agreements. This one here is at Sunfish. The next action item is at Ramsey Boulevard. Essentially, the agreement just spells out some of the requirements for the county, how it's a long-term agreement. When working with BNSF, you don't actually acquire any right-of-way from the railroad. It's just not the process that is in place right now. Instead, you get a permitted area to work in and to build your facility in, so we have, it's almost like a temporary easement, a long-term temporary easement. I guess we'd call it that. So that's what this agreement spells out. It also spells out the cost participation with that. So fortunately, again, BNSF has been a great partner. They are going to contribute between these two agreements approximately $2 million towards the construction of this project.
Okay, I'll move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Discussion?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Schulte.
Joe, I know it's in federal legislation, but the railroad's supposed to contribute 5% of the bridge projects, and I assume between the two bridge projects, their money is equivalent to 5%?
Yeah, so Commissioner, he brings up a great point. So according to federal law, when there's federal funds involved in these projects, or it's next to a railroad, they're supposed to contribute 5% of the cost towards the construction of the specific improvements that go over the railroad. So in this case, as you can imagine, it'd be tough to delineate exactly where that is and how much that specific cost is. So when we worked with them, they took a little grander scheme look at it and said, all right, this is what our fair share cost should be. So to your point, that's exactly correct.
Commissioner Gamash.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Joe, on this one, I noticed that McKinley Street is kind of close to the railroad tracks. I know that you need some space for a bridge to come down. Is there going to be a realignment there, or I'm not sure exactly how we're going to handle it. Maybe it's not as close as it looks from the sky.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, yeah. Good question. As you can see on the screen there, in the red circle, the intersection that he's referring to is right here. McKinley is very close to the railroad, so what is actually going to happen is we're actually going to lift that intersection up. We're not going to realign it, but McKinley will come up. So both on the eastern leg and the western leg, it'll rise approximately, I can't remember exactly off the top of my head, but I'm saying 6 to 8 feet at that intersection, because we're still on the ramp coming back down.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, yeah, I, so I have a question about what Commissioner Schulte was talking about. So is this new legislation about the, okay, so that's just a standard practice. Okay, and then the 5% you said for any bridge project?
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Commissioner Schulte.
And Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's in federal legislation. It's been there a long time, and it only covers the construction of the bridge over the tracks. So if you have a $22 million project, which includes approaches and right-of-way and easements, they don't pay for any of that. They pay for the 5% of the construction over the railroad tracks.
So just the actual bridge?
Bridge over the tracks, and arguably, the amount that they're giving is probably more than the 5% required by law.
Okay.
When we did the Hanson Bridge particularly, we negotiated, and they came to the table in really good faith and offered 10%, doubling their federally required amount, which was a great partnership at that time.
Okay.
It's, I hate to say this, but it's almost unheard of with BNSF to have that relationship and that development that brings in more than the required money, but they've been good to work with on our projects. I've said it all along, every time we do a rail grade separation, we're improving their numbers. They've got a lot less to worry about, a lot less insurance issues, a lot less risk involved with every movement of their train and every crossing we eliminate for them. So it is a benefit. They realize that. I think that's why they're being such good partners.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess just a follow-up comment. I mean, not that 5% isn't, I mean, it's definitely something and appreciated, but then that's not, you know, a lot in terms of what you're saying for the benefits overall, that they're also receiving, right, for these projects. But, and then I'm just, now, okay, I'm sorry. So now then, I'm curious. So it's been in legislation, the 5%, I mean, is there a chance that that would be increased, because the trend is that we are doing more and more of these grade separation projects for safety, right? So I'm just, I'm just curious what the likelihood of that is?
Commissioner Schulte.
Very unlikely. The rail lobby is huge and powerful, and they take great pride in reminding us regularly, they were here long before we were. There were no roads. There were very few cities. There were railroads here, and we're impinging on their rights of way. And they make that pretty clear, and they make a solid point. I mean, it's no different than the Native Americans and their land and all the treaties that were developed because of that. So it's one of those things. They were here first, and we need to play nice, and the 5% mandated by law was something they capitulated to, along with the FRA, and I believe it was in the 50s. It was a long time ago. I'm not sure of the date, but quite a while ago.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that's item four. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item five.
It's basically the same contract with BNSF, but for the Sunfish Lake Boulevard project.
I will move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item six.
The committee recommends award of a contract in the amount of $307,461 to Thomas &amp; Sons Construction for concrete repairs at various locations on CASA 18 and CASA 22 in the cities of Andover, Ham Lake, and Oak Grove. Joe, do you want to tell us about the concrete issues?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Members of the board, so last year, we started seeing some pop-ups. We had some panels that actually tented up on 22, and then on County Road 18 there, which is circled, that is a previously completed, what we call a white-topping project. So they come in and they profile mill the blacktop or bituminous roadway surface, and then they cover it with a concrete overlay. Typically, those are 6 to 8 inches thick, depending on how the design works, but throughout time, just like blacktop roads, you do need to maintain them. So on 22 specifically, I'll step back to that one, we saw some tenting panels where they actually rose up during the hotter periods of the summer. Last summer, we had a relatively dry summer and some very hot days, and so we had, I believe, three or four sections on that roadway that tented up. And so last year, what we did is we had to remove those. We cut them out. We backfilled them with blacktop material because we don't have a concrete plant at our disposal. So we filled them up with blacktop. They're holding up, but we do need to replace them. And then on County Road 18, that was actually one of the very first white-topping projects that we did. The, a majority of the road is holding up very well, but when we completed that roadway, there was actually segments of the concrete that we had to leave out during construction to allow traffic to get through into the neighborhoods and the side streets. So each one of those, it was a different style of mix of concrete. We're starting to see that that's breaking down prematurely. So each one of those areas, they're approximately 15 feet long, 14 feet long. We need to remove them and replace them with new concrete in those areas. We're trying to get ahead of it. So figure we had some work on 22 to do. We might as well pick up the spots on 18. And then additionally, we started seeing some issues at the railroad grade crossing on Viking Boulevard. We're starting to see that some of the panels were starting to sink, and so we're working with BNSF again to update that crossing, so they'll put new panels in, and then along with that, we will do the concrete tie-in with our concrete pavement there. So this is just a cleanup project to get some maintenance work done on our county roads.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte, second by Commissioner Kamash. Discussion? Commissioner Kamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding that, we talked about potholes, and we talked about what the MINDOT is going to be doing. This is just to remind everyone that even though we've done some of these concrete to try it and see how well it works, and it has been working great, there are still things that we have to work on. And whether it's in the summer or winter, whatever months it is that these things will move around, nothing's perfect in this weather conditions that we have in Minnesota, so it's good that we're on top of it. But there's costs that we have to incur every year in a lot of cases, so good work.
Okay. Any further discussion? Singing non, roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Item seven.
The committee recommends award of a contract in the amount of $6,797,705.52 to North Valley Inc., and this is for our 2023 countywide overlay program at various locations. And Joe can point out the locations on this map for us.
Yeah, thank you. Members of the board, so this is our 2023 countywide overlay program. You'll notice that the number is at 6.7. We were very fortunate and surprised to see that we actually got some really solid bids this year. If you notice in the action item, our engineer's estimate, which was based on last year's bid prices, which were hovering right around $100 a ton, which is very high compared to previous years. We utilized those numbers when we put our estimate together this year. We were surprised and very fortunate to see that they actually came in in the mid 70s and lower 80s. So very happy to see that. That's why we got the solid bids. North Valley's done a lot of work in our county. They do a great job. So excited to award this project to them, but was, we were very excited to see that we actually saw some positive news on a bid result recently. As we've seen earlier this year, when we did a few of our roundabout projects, we were seeing 30% overages versus the engineer's estimate. So kind of balancing things out here, but I think this will be a good project. This is our planned overlay program. However, since there was some savings on this, and we know that there are other issues, as we mentioned, we talked about potholes this morning, we may actually put together another subset project for overlays because we do have a couple of county roads that unexpectedly did blow up this year. One of those spots was at Lake Drive in Maine in the city of Lino Lakes. But we know that that intersection is, you know, the pavement there is getting older, but this year it really, it really showed its age. So that's an area that we're likely going to add, and then there'll be a few others. So you may see something coming forward in the future.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kamash. Further discussion? Saying no further discussion, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And would you like me to go into my chair report?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. For informational item, we've got to discuss MINDOT's Highway 10 Rum River Bridge project to include additional detour routes on our county roads. And this is to go into effect. The signage will go up, I believe, tomorrow, but there's been some changes. So Joe, what do you want to let us know about that?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Members of the board, so when MINDOT and their contractor for the Rum River Bridge and Ferry Street Bridge project was putting together their final plans to start construction again this year, part of the original project also included making bridge repairs on the bridge that goes over 7th Avenue, as well as the bridge that goes over the railroad. So they were going to coordinate that with their work on the other two bridges, the Rum River Bridge and the Ferry Street Bridge. So they're getting ready to prepare for that this year as they started looking at their traffic layouts, taking a more detailed look at some of the acceleration lanes and merge lanes that exist on Highway 10 around 7th Avenue. It quickly became apparent that they weren't going to be able to make it safely work with their original plan. So with that said, they are going to actually close down. And actually, if I switch over to the, to the GIS map, if Eric is still, there we go. You know, that magically appears. So this is an image of Highway 10 and 7th Avenue. You can even see here, we got the 2020, 2022 aerial that shows the temporary loop ramp that was constructed for last year's work. What they're going to need to do is since they're going to be working on the railroad bridge and then also the 7th Avenue Bridge, and they're going to be constraining traffic into the new westbound lanes on Highway 10 to get this work completed, they were running out of room to make their merge onto Highway 10 from the 7th Avenue on-ramp. So starting Wednesday, as Commissioner Brassad had mentioned, this ramp will close. So what that means for the public is if you utilize 7th Avenue to travel south in the morning or at any time to get onto eastbound 10, you're going to have to use some of these alternative paths. So this will be closed starting Wednesday through approximately the end of May. So we got about a month and a half here to deal with this. The alternate routes, if we can flip back to the presentation, I'll pull that off, will be Bunker on the north. You're also going to have Round Lake Boulevard and East Main. So for instance, if you are a resident that lives north of the Anoka High School on 7th Avenue, instead of going straight south to Highway 10 and then getting on via that on-ramp, what we're going to recommend doing is you'll come south, and then at Bunker Lake Boulevard, you will take a left, head east, travel over to Round Lake Boulevard, and then south on Round Lake Boulevard and get on via those entrance ramps, and then vice versa. The good news is, in the westbound direction, you'll still be able to go to 7th Avenue and get off on the off-ramp and then go back north on 7th. This only affects the on-ramp, the eastbound on-ramp. So again, that's approximately between tomorrow and then the end of May. So we got about a month and a half to deal with this.
Commissioner Schulte.
Joe, the loop ramp that you pointed out earlier, is that still open for this year?
So Commissioner, great question. I had asked that same question, if that was an opportunity to open that back up and utilize that. But again, because of the lane arrangement they're going to use this year to get the eastbound portion of that Rum River Bridge done, they're going to have all the traffic on the north side of those existing Jersey barriers, so it won't work in this case. But that was a great, great question.
So just for clarity, all eastbound ramp movements off of 7th Avenue will be shut down?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, you know, I did have a question about the regular transportation agenda, so I'll let anyone finish this item first.
Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you. So we all know that these, these detours are great, and the majority of people should be following these, but a lot of locals don't and try and find what we feel is the best backroads possible, one of which would be North Street in that backroad. Have you notified the city of both Anoka and Coon Rapids about these detours and the possibility that alternate routes will be chosen by the community and impact those neighborhoods along that road?
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yeah, that, that has come up. So the city of Anoka participates in these weekly meetings with MINDOT, so they're well aware. The city Coon Rapids participates more infrequently because it doesn't impact their city directly. So that is a good reminder. I will reach out to them to make sure that they know, but they get the same, same information that we typically do.
Just a quick follow. And in addition to that, that three-way stop intersection right off of Round Lake as you enter into the Walmart Cub Foods, that is always an incredibly dangerous intersection, and that's going to increase in craziness when people use this backway a lot more frequently during this month and a half.
Yeah, so, yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, what she's referring to is if we go back to the GIS map there, I'm making Eric earn his money today. There we go. Okay, so if I scroll over, the intersection that she, Commissioner Jepson had mentioned is right here. So off of Round Lake Boulevard, you've got Northdale Boulevard, and then you've got this short segment of road, and this is a very unique three-way stop, which is complicated at best. So that is something we're well aware of. Actually, a little bit of history there. The city has looked at even possibly converting that to a roundabout at some point in the future, so still on the books. But as of right now, that is something that we'll have to be aware of and continue to monitor.
I got a call from a resident that said, you know, I caught the thing on, on Channel 5 on Highway 10, and, and, you know, the problem is that we, we have, we can't merge off of 7th Avenue onto, onto Highway 10. I said, well, to that point, we're going to be discussing the fact that that's actually the upgrade, and there's going to be some detour routes. So he's very pleased to learn of that, because I think anyone in the area here knows the complexity of trying to get on Highway 10 at that point over the railroad bridge and, you know, jockeying traffic and that sort of thing. And there's a few man, potholes that you also have to try and avoid. So I know that, and my, my reassurance was, to him was that we, this whole project has been thought through on so many levels, and everything has really been taken into account in a way that I would say in my 12 years on the, on the county board, we may not have done that in the past. And there's really an extra emphasis on making sure that everything is being addressed. And while we may not fix 100% of all the problems, I think we're, we're creeping up on 100, pretty close here on, on addressing all the problems that we have out there in these specific areas. But yeah, I think Main Street will be a little busier. I know that's busy. Bunker can handle it, the, the traffic flow. But each person will have to determine how they want to try and navigate this during this time. But the improvement is, is worth the, worth the inconvenience, so definitely.
So yes, Commissioner Kamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Joe, will MINDOT be placing any signage at the intersection of Bunker and 7th to let people know that there's no access to 10 going westbound or eastbound, excuse me, at that, so they'll be directed there?
Yes, they will.
Okay, great. To the public, and I, and I think through your group with, I've seen, we've seen Facebook posts, Twitter posts, and I think we'll also be probably doing something from administration and also from us just to remind people within that area of our cities. Bunker is a 50 mile an hour speed limit through that area from 7th there, so, you know, be prepared. You're not going to be going 55, 60. The Sheriff's Department will be around, I'm sure, just to make sure things work safely. And then there's already increased traffic due to detours and other things going back, so there's more traffic on Bunker as we had anticipated. So just plan ahead for people that use, are going to need to use that road. If you have to get to work at a certain time, plan ahead. It's going to be a little bit slower for a month, a little more than a month. But in the end, it's going to be a better intersection later on after the month of May. So it's planning and then just drive safely during the heavier traffic that'll be on the roads.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, that was for informational purposes.
Yep, and that concludes my chair report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Yes, Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I'm sorry. I did have one other question about the, I guess, the regular transportation report under informational items, so number nine. I believe we were just giving updates to the Met Council for the transportation policy plan. And so I'm just wondering, like, is there any, is there any expected follow-up with that? Were, were we just giving input to them and they're just taking notes, or was it about making improvements of, of some kind?
Mr. Chair, it was pretty much, we could share with them our concerns over the TPP, their, their plan. And they were good listeners. We had a lot of different comments and concerns. But we'll see what actually comes out of it.
Okay, well, well, thank you. I do appreciate that. I know there's, it's quite complicated and so, and I wasn't at the meeting, obviously, so that's why I'm asking, but thank you.
I do believe that we got their PowerPoint presentation. If you would want to take a look at that, it was interesting. And yeah, there was a lot of people there, you know, a couple from Met Council, their consulting group, and many of us that, you know, expressed our frustrations and concerns and, but yeah, good listeners. We'll, we'll see what happens.
There's a, yeah, there's a, there's kind of a push for reducing expansion. And we'll probably end up seeing that in this new plan. As everyone knows, expansion is what we kind of live and breathe here in Anoka County because of the, as one of the second fastest growing county in the state, you, you, you deal with expansion issues. And so if there's opposition to expansion or if the TPP, you know, tries to prohibit, limit, you know, reduce, whatever word you want to use, expansion, that impacts us directly. And so I think one of our main themes for that discussion was the necessity for expansion. And so the likelihood of that getting into this document, I think, is probably going to be challenging, but they may make mention of it. I'm not sure. Arana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Meisner, I just wanted to let you know that we also did share with the cities at our local elected officials meeting that their input is needed. And, you know, Joe has sent out information as well because we wanted to make sure that they had that same opportunity because the Met Council has not held a meeting specifically with our communities. I think Minneapolis and St. Paul did get their very own meeting, but our communities didn't have the same sort of opportunities. So we did share that with them.
Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes the Transportation Committee report. Moving on to Intergovernmental Community Relations Committee report, Commissioner Reiner.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee met on March 28th, 2023. It was very well attended, and there was no public comment. We do have a few items that we're requesting action on this morning. And the first one is the committee recommends the county board accept a grant in the amount of $100,000 from the CDC Fast Healthcare Interoperability Resources, FHIR, to integrate real-time data exchange between Vertex CME and the Minnesota Department of Health, MRNC, Electronic Death Registration Systems. And basically, this is to help modernize medical legal death investigation system.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Meisner.
Jepson.
I'm sorry, second by Commissioner Jepson?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Jepson.
I will second it though.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. There we go. Strikes again. Okay. Any, any discussion on this? Singing non roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Item two.
Okay, next item on the agenda today is, I guess, another example of what, how good our coroner's office is doing. We handle half of the state, and our footprint in Wisconsin is growing. So the committee recommends the county board today approve contract number C triple zero 9851 with Bayfield, Wisconsin Coroners Office for autopsy services with an estimated income of $10,000 to $16,000 per year.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Discussion? I just would like to say they continue doing an outstanding job, and I think they're recognized for that. And people are interested in, in contracting with us and doing business with us, so kudos to them and keep up the great work. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Kamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Item three.
Item number three is that our committee recommends the county board adopt resolution number 2023-IGO2, and this is a resolution accepting donations from patrons. And I should add too, there were 15 different line items here of people and organizations donating, donating for a total of $10,927.35, and over half of them were by individuals.
Mr. Reiner, do you want to read them off for the record?
I will, at the risk of maybe butchering some names, but I will do that. Donna Tomczak for books by mail, $200. George and Bernadette Eldcroft for $200. Fridley Lyons Club for two benches at Mississippi for $2,500. Goodwill donation box, book carts for $2,516.35. Yolanda and Erling Fagelsow, that's $200. Catherine, Catherine Sluzar for $1,000. Catherine Carley for $100. Cindy Shram for $250. Marvell Drain for $500. League of Minnesota Poets for $250. Friends of Anoka County Library, $2,500. Kristen Bergerson, $15. Spring Lake Park Lions, $150. Sale of Kennedy Medallions, $540, and then anonymous, $6.
Wonderful. Is there an offer this? Wonderful. Is there an offer of this resolution?
I would offer that one.
Uh, resolution's been offered by Commissioner Reinert. Any discussion on this? Just want to thank everyone and their generosity and the dollars are well-used in our library systems and, uh, we appreciate their kindness. Uh, without any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That resolution passes unanimously.
Then we do have a couple of informational items. Um, I guess I'd like to bring attention to this one here, number four, and that is for informational purposes. The Midwest Medical's Examiner's Office has been invited to participate in the National Center for Forensic Programs that provides, uh, pathology, uh, um, rotations for medical students that may have an interest in forensic pathology. And, uh, this is actually, you know, great that we were, you know, asked to do this. Um, again, it shows and a big compliment to the work they are doing. Uh, there are only 500, um, forensic pathologists in the country. There's a shortage of them. And, um, our involvement hopefully will expand that. Uh, a couple other items for informational purposes. Um, we had Joe McPherson, our Director of Transportation, uh, update us on some legislation regarding metro sales tax for transit. And also Ronda Severajah, our county administrator, came to update us on legislation regarding the Joint Law Enforcement Council. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Reinert. Commissioner Schulte.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just think it might be a good time to point out because we're discussing the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office, that our law enforcement in Anoka County, uh, yesterday and today have recognized, they spent time there, both the county sheriffs and many of the local PDs, uh, in escorting the two officers that were murdered over in Wisconsin. And Midwest Medical Examiner's Office will be doing those autopsies. And our, uh, our law enforcement was, uh, committed to being a part of the procession and a part of the overseeing and standing guard while those officers are there at the ME's office. I just wanted to call them out for that, uh, great work that law enforcement does and, and the sad day that we had to deal with when those two officers were murdered. And the rest they all take each and every day in protecting our safety needs to be recognized every chance we get. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Schulte. And, uh, I believe that concludes the, um, Intergovernmental Report. We'll move on to the Parks Report and Commissioner Gamas.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. The Parks Committee met on Tuesday, April 4th at Bunker Hills Regional Park Campground Visitor Center. Um, I was not able to attend, so thanks, thank you to, um, Commissioner Reinert and Commissioner Meisner for handling the meeting. We have three action items. Uh, the committee recommended to the county board to adopt resolution 2023 PRK O3 related to the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Snowmobile Trail Grant in Aid Program. We have been, um, part of this for 36 years and we've received grant assistance, um, at the local sponsor as a pass-through fiscal agent for three snowmobile clubs in Anoka County that maintain the snowmobile trails. The three snowmobile clubs in Anoka County are the Rice Creek Trail Association, Kiwi Crossing, and Snow Ghosts. Um, this resolution is of support is required to be updated every two years and must be included in the application process required by the Department of Natural Resources. So, um, we had a busy year, I would assume, on the trails. Uh, I think they were in pretty great shape for most of the year and till some ice probably got on there, but, uh, they're being groomed and taken care of by the clubs. And we appreciate the money that, uh, helps the clubs do that. Um, so we usually move this along. Jeff Perry is here from our Parks Department. Jeff, did you want to add anything to this one?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. My name is Jeff Perry, Park Director for Anoka County. And I would just, uh, uh, echo Commissioner Gamas's comments. Extremely busy year, uh, great snow conditions and, uh, you know, excellent, uh, service to provide to the snowmobilers here in Anoka County and beyond because we get a lot of regional, uh, folks that use these snowmobile trails as well. So, uh, great season and, uh, yeah, we, we look forward to working with these three clubs here in Anoka County.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution been offered by Commissioner Meisner. Is there any discussion, further discussion? I'd just like to say I know that, you know, as these snowmobilers are using not only other businesses that specialize in parts and selling snowmobiles and that sort of thing. And that's been tough years for them in the past. This has been a great year, I'm sure, for them. Uh, but, uh, but also they, they visit the various different establishments as they're going around. And, um, so it's a community certainly coming together, uh, at that level. And then it's a, it's an economy as well that's, that's developed because of this. So maintaining these and, and certainly applying these, uh, trail grant aid programs successfully helped to, helped to drive a local economy, which is beneficial to our area. So I know a lot of people, especially, I'm thinking of, uh, I don't know if he's a spokesperson for them, but, uh, a council member, Jeff Weaver, I know is a huge advocate of, of these programs and, and uses them quite a bit. So a lot of people enjoy this during the winter. Anyways, if there's no further discussion, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That resolution passes unanimously. Item two.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item two, the committee recommends to the county board to authorize a purchase order in the amount of $159,800 to Hawkinson Anderson for design, engineering, and construction project management services for the Rice Creek Chain of Lakes roadway and parking lot, uh, reconstruction. Uh, this is moving forward, um, let me get down to this part. Here we go. Uh, the county issued a request for proposals for design, engineering, and construction project management services for this area and getting the, both the roadway and the parking lot reconstruction. Three proposals were received. Hawkinson Anderson of Anoka, Minnesota, with a proposed amount of 159,000, $159,800 was the lowest bid, I believe. And the estimated construction cost for the project, uh, was 1.5 million. Um, so we're planning to award this to Hawkinson Anderson, uh, with your vote today.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, um, move to recommend that the board approve the purchase order for Hawkinson Anderson.
Okay, this has been moved by Commissioner Reinert. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Meisner. Discussion. Fair amount of alligatoring on that, and I'm not sure that's a current picture, but, uh, definitely need a repair. So, uh, if there's no further, uh, comments, um, roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Item three.
Item three, Mr. Chairs, recommend the county board to authorize professional service contract for TKDA for design, engineering, and project management services for the Coon Creek Bridge replacement and trail reconstruction. Um, as you're all aware, the bridge over the Coon, over Coon Creek and Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park has been closed, uh, to the slope failure resulting in unsafe bridge conditions. Uh, TKDA conducted a feasibility study on the bridge and creek hydraulics. And since TKDA is familiar with the project, the Parks Department would like to continue working with TKDA to perform design, engineering, and construction management for the replacement of the bridge. Um, and as well as, uh, some trail reconstruction in the day, in the regional park. Uh, the estimated construction cost for the bridge project is 2.8 million and 1,005, 1.05 million for the trail component. Um, the funding source is the Met Council Parks CIP and Parks and Trill Legacy Grants. So, uh, we want to award this to TKDA in the amount of $224,824.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
Move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jepson. Any discussion? Great photo, by the way. I'm not sure who does our photo shots, but, uh, very, very pristine and nice looking photo there. Uh, if there's no further discussion on this, um, roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
And then just one informational item, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, um, the Mighty Mississippi Cleanup Challenge is on its way, uh, to Anoka County on Saturday, April 22nd from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We will be, um, doing a cleanup at the Mississippi West Regional Park. That's on 13900 Trap Rock Street in Ramsey. And, um, for those interested, we've got some information on our website as to how you can participate. Uh, we've got another one coming up on Wednesday, April 26th. Uh, it goes from 8:30 in the morning till 12:30 PM at the Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park. Uh, that is located at 9750 Egrit Boulevard Northwest in Coon Rapids. Um, and, uh, that one, uh, we have Medtronic participating with us. That's why we have a Wednesday, uh, morning, uh, cleanup project. But we're open to anybody that might want to, um, volunteer and come on down. We've got, uh, garbage bags and gloves and some, we ask you to bring gloves and probably be prepared to have some boots on and things like that. We're not necessarily going into the river. Uh, the river's moving quite fast right now and will be continuing to move quite fast, uh, over the next couple weeks. So, uh, we're not taking that part on. We're kind of going, walking along the river and, and certain areas. Our staff will be there to help, um, people, uh, be directed in the right areas and stay out of areas that could be, um, a little risky. So we don't, we don't want to do that, but we want to get the river cleaned up. This is a contest that was started, uh, by Goodhue County. Um, and, and they have kind of challenged other, um, counties along the river all the way up to, uh, the northern part of where the river begins in, uh, near Bemidji. So we are, uh, doing our part, trying to get this cleaned up. The number that you can call, um, if you wish to give us a call and volunteer and see, get some more information is, uh, 763-324-3300. Uh, there is a, um, information on our website. So you can go to the Anoka County website and, or the Anoka County Parks website and find out more information on the Mighty Mississippi Cleanup Challenge. Uh, you may know that, uh, the Mississippi River is the sixth most endangered river in the U.S. due to pollution. So we're going to do our part, um, to gather what, uh, kind of comes during the winter and loads up alongside of our shores, um, along that and get that cleaned up. So again, that's Saturday, April 22nd from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Mississippi West Regional Park up in Ramsey. And Wednesday, April 26th from 8:30 AM to 12:30 PM at the Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park. Thank you.
Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank you for bringing that initiative forward. That, uh, is, is great to be able to participate and help to clean that up. Um, and then also I wanted to let you know that Commissioner Gamas, Commissioner Reinert, and I flipped a coin about who would get your maple syrup in the Parks Committee. So, uh, you did miss out by, by missing that committee meeting. Thank you.
No problem, no problem. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Gamas. Uh, let us go to our additional county board agenda item here. Um, as we're in committee reports here, so, uh, it's recommended by the management committee, there's a approval of change order number two and amendment number four of contract C triple zero eight four six three E with collaborative solutions in the amount of $101,350 for continued workday system support effective April 11th, 2023. And, um, you'll see the contract is attached there. This has to do with human resources and not finance, although Workday is involved with finance as well. You hear a fair amount about Workday because they're helping us through these, 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 uh, systems that we're implementing here, uh, providing that necessary support. So this is a change order for that, those services that, uh, that we'll be requiring from them. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brassad. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that. And that concludes the management committee report. Additional board item. We will move on now to item number nine, which is consider approving the release of declarations for the West Side properties at the Fred Lee North Star commuter rail station without additional limitations so that the Met Council can redevelop and manage the properties without further involvement by Anoka County as recommended, as recommended by the Anoka County Regional Authority. I know we discussed this. We, um, had staff look into it, determine if we had any dollars associated with this, if there needed to be any reimbursement, and there wasn't. Uh, so this is just, uh, essentially removing our interest, whatever interest that would be, aside from our name on, on the title, uh, to allow them now to develop that. I know Commissioner Meisner has had some experience with the opposite side and developments that's occurred there, uh, that's been very successful. And so they're looking to develop on this side as well while keeping some parking and maintaining necessary, um, you know, uh, the, the parking spaces for those that are going to be riding train and that sort of thing. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Meisner.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gamas. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes. Item ten, consider resolution 2023 dash three eight, the 2023 Special Board of Appeal and Equilization Member Appointment. You'll see the attached resolutions there. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'd like to offer the resolution.
Uh, the resolution's offered by Commissioner Meisner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Item 11 is committee appointments. Consider reappointing Jim Hafner and Matthew Herbst, who the board believes can fairly represent all hydrologic areas within the district to the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers for three-year terms ending May 27th, 2026. You'll see the attached applications there. Is there a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint.
Okay. Commissioner Jepson.
Second.
Moves and Commissioner Brassad seconds. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Schulte.
Um, it's been a recognized practice by the board that if we have good working managers on our watershed districts, that we reappoint them. Uh, and we've done that. Even though we have good applicants and the cities submit lists, we still feel that the incumbents are doing a good job, we reappoint them. Um, I would suggest at some point that, hey, I don't know if we need to workshop it. I think we got enough workshop stuff, but I think at some point we do need to discuss how long those terms should go and if at some point, uh, new blood should be brought in. In this case, I, the city of Coon Rapids is concerned that they haven't had a representative for a while. And when they do get a representative, oftentimes they're moved off for other reasons. And, uh, I believe both of these gentlemen are from Blaine, uh, which is fine. It's part of the hydrologic area, Coon Creek Watershed, and they've done a good job. So I'm pleased to support their reappointment. I just, uh, I do think it's something we need to, yeah, take under advisement at some point as to whether or not we allow six years, 12 years, whatever it is, to make sure that every city within the watershed district gets its opportunity to be represented on that board.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, I think Commissioner Jepson's first.
Commissioner Jepson.
Um, completely agree, Commissioner, uh, Schulte. Um, and I did request with, um, Administrator Severajah to put it on a work session since it's not a priority, but in, in the coming months, because I have no problem reappointing these two gentlemen. Um, but I do think that there needs to be an official process. And if that's going to be the, um, precedence that we take, we, we need to let the community know that. Um, but if there are some, any changes to that process, uh, we also need to allow the community to know that as well. But I do, um, definitely support the idea for offering term limits or just changes that might need to be make, made in the event that a different area of the community has very qualified appointees and would like to be additionally represented on that, um, on that watershed district.
Okay. Commissioner Meisner, then Commissioner Brassad.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes. So I also agree. I do believe that we, as a board, need to be a little bit more flexible and inclusive of the voices of the cities. I don't know exactly what that looks like. And then I was just going to comment to Commissioner Schulte. I, I do, I, I do think we need to actually work session it and then discuss it, but it looks like that's already being done. Um, so I just wanted to make note of that. I, I know you're not necessarily a big fan of talking about everything, but this, this is something that's been talked about since I've been a commissioner in terms of what's consistent and what practice are we having. And then there's been some legal changes. Uh, so I think it is good to just sort of figure this out.
Commissioner Brassad.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I do know that there was some talk about perhaps some, uh, changes in the statute of, that controls the watershed district. Uh, Senator Crewan has, he talked to me, he served on the watershed board and he would like to see some changes. And I think one of those things was like term limits on the board, but that would come down through a legislative statu- statute change. But I do think that we have someone on there from Coon Rapids right now, our last appointment.
Of the late, the woman.
Mary that we decided on. And at that point, the map, we were pretty well, you know, everyone was pretty much served. It was, uh, pretty much spread over the county. So I do think that the process that we have has worked. I, uh, like I said, I've had a couple of conversations with Senator Crewan that would like to make some other changes to this. Um, definitely isn't going to happen this year. Um, but I think we wait and see and, you know, it, uh, it just a term limit because we know that there has been some board members that have been on there for, well, not currently, but in the past, you know, um, someone just left not too long ago that had been in there, I think, over 30 years.
Decades.
Right. So, um, I think that's a, a good thing. So kind of watch and wait on that.
Commissioner Schulte.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brassad, uh, I need to apologize. I forgot we appointed Mary Campbell recently from Coon Rapids. So thank you for clarifying that. I, and again, it doesn't change our need to have the conversation about term limits. Um, and I say- our need to have the conversation about term limits. And I say that tongue-in-cheek, as my dad was president of that Coon Creek Watershed for 18 years. So he probably would be applauding me right now, saying term limits are a good thing. I'm not sure.
18?
Not sure he loved all 18 years of that, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and I know that Mr. Hafner, who is on now, is filling Senator Crean's spot, so he's relatively new. And I think even Mr. Herbst wasn't appointed all that long ago. I mean, he might be in his second term, but I wasn't sure if it was a full term or not. I'm trying to remember. But I know that there, we had a lot of, lot of changes going on there for a while, so we haven't had a lot of stability on there, which is also good for a period of time. But I do agree, we should have a, a policy that, that does set some kind of term limits or a standard that we're looking for. So I agree.
This is perhaps one of the main complaints we get, is that our community is never represented, you know. So, and it's a fair complaint. But what I will say is, having started on the Lower Rim River Watershed Organization, some experience or longevity is actually beneficial because this is complex information that they deal with. And, and certainly you don't want decisions that are made, you know, without background and knowledge and experience and that sort of thing. But same token, I think there are other, you know, members of communities that, that have the expertise and should be able to participate as well. But at the risk of discussing this here today without a, you know, a work session, we'll, we'll get it on a work session if need be here, and we'll chat about the topics. And I don't know if Senator Crean might be available as well, maybe to come in during that time, but we'd certainly invite him to participate as well if he wishes to do that. So if there is nothing else to come before our board meeting today, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.